Call this annual district budget meeting for the Region 12 Board of Education to order. I will take, oh, there's no attendance, right, so I'll call it to order. Is there a nomination for a moderator to conduct this meeting? Tony?
I nominate Karen Files.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Michelle. Any other nominations? All right, there's motions to nominate Karen Files as the moderator. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right. Madam Moderator, would you read the call of the meeting?
Notice of annual district budget meeting. Notice is hereby given to all those entitled to vote in town meetings in the towns of Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington that a district meeting will be held on Monday, May 6th at 7:00 PM in the library of the Chapag Valley Middle School High School, 159 South Street, Washington, Connecticut, to present for approval the annual budget for the year 2013-2014, prepared by the Regional Board of Education for Chapag Valley Regional School District 12, copies of which are on file with the respective town clerks of the district and at the central office of the Board of Education. Chapag Valley Regional School District 12, Bridgewater, Roxbury, Washington, by James Hurstfield, Chairman, Board of Education, Washington Depot, Connecticut, 06794, and I'll turn the meeting over to you.
All right, Karen, thank you very much. At this point, I am presenting, on behalf of the Board of Education, the boards have previously passed budget in the amount of $21,660.
Three one million.
I'm sorry. Twenty-one million, six hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars for 2013-2014 school year, in accordance with Texas's 10-51 of the general statutes. And accordingly, this meeting, this annual district budget meeting is adjourned until tomorrow, Tuesday, May 7th, 2013, until polls open in each of the three-member towns for the purpose of voting the question. The meeting shall then be considered as adjourned following the close of the polls in the three-member towns and announcements made of the results of the voting, results of voting the question. The polls are open in Bridgewater, Roxbury, and Washington from 12 noon to 8:00 PM. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Absolute.
Deacon? Any special, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? All right, annual district budget meeting is adjourned until tomorrow's referendum. All right, I'd like to then turn to Region 12 Board of Education, May 6th, 2013, regular business meeting. Welcome. I'd like to say, as an initial matter, welcome to Susan Stumpf, is that right?
Yes.
Susan is a new member from Bridgewater, sadly, in some papers replacing Marty Ford, who was unable to continue, so welcome, Susan. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. So I will take attendance. Valerie Anderson? Not here. Tony?
Yes.
Alan? Is not here. Fran?
Here.
Greg?
Is not here.
Laird?
Yes.
Michelle?
Here.
Emily?
Here.
Kelly? Is not here. Michael?
Here.
And Susan?
Here.
All right, so Kelly Blott, Greg Cava, Alan Brown, and Valerie Anderson are absent at this point. We have a forum. Item two on the agenda is the consent agenda, which, or the meeting minutes of the Education Committee meeting on April 22nd, 2013. Does anybody seek to take anything off the consent agenda? All right, then it's approved. Report to the Chair. I know that there's people waiting to present to us tonight, and so I'll get through what I wanted to say quickly, but I did want to, I'm probably stealing someone's thunder, but I did want to comment on the district newsletter that was recently received last week, and I thought it was an excellent job, and I thank everybody, the staff and everyone who wrote for it, and certainly Alan and his committee for putting it together, the Communications Committee, so it was very nicely done. I guess that's it for me right now. Superintendent's report?
Okay, great. I'd like to add my congratulations for an excellent job. I got a lot of positive feedback. I do want to just make one point of clarification. Kathy Kalella and Emily Judd decided to write together this year to present a consolidated front of what's going on in all the elementary schools, and her name was left off there, so it kind of looks like it's just Kathy's article, but it isn't. That represents, and the title says that, it's just that Emily's name isn't there. And I just want to let everybody know that it really was an article from all of the three schools. I would like to let you know a couple of things. First of all, it's Teacher Appreciation Week for all of our teachers out there. Thank you for doing a fabulous, fabulous job. It is a wonderful job, very rewarding, but also can be very difficult at times, so we really do appreciate all you do, and I hope that parents and the students spend some time this week thanking you for your hard work. Also, today is the National Nurses' Day, but Wednesday is the State of Connecticut Nurses' Day, so happy Nurses' Day to our nurses, and we appreciate what you do for our children also. It's important, that thank you means a lot, because we don't always get that. I want to let you know about long-range planning goal number three. We had a small meeting today to try to work out some of the numbers. What's happening now is we're getting a lot of different numbers and resource sheets, and when do we start, when do we not start? So Anthony Amato, who is a marketing and financial parent, has been trying to help us guide the group, and he'll be there Thursday night to give us some feedback, but I just want to remind everyone that in your packets, there is a revised calendar, it was in my newsletter, for the upcoming meetings, and I really want, I can't stress enough the importance for the board, making sure you're available every Monday in June, so that we can have a plan to revise or amend our regionalization plan if that's what the board chooses to do. So that's really very important. I please ask that you keep those dates open. Is there anything else right now? I think that's it right now.
All right.
We have Project Lead the Way, which Teresa DeBrito, who is the principal of the middle school, is going to explain it. We have a lot of students here, I'm thrilled to see them, and take it away, Teresa.
Good evening, everyone. I do have a handout.
Thank you.
I'll be taking that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I was informed that I must stand on this back panel, so I'm at my post. I just want to go back a year, at the time that I went before the board and had a proposal put together, just before budget time, asking for support for revamping of our technology education program, to really bring it up to 21st century standards. And you did give your blessing, and that's why we're here a year later, to showcase all the tremendous work that students have been doing with technology education classes. So I'm just going to quickly go through what I have handed out to you, and further explain the curriculum and the middle school program for Project Lead the Way. There is a national focus on getting students to go into engineering, science, math, technology courses, because we have a tremendous number of employees in those fields that are retiring, and there are not enough new employees to replace them. So it's a dire, excuse me, a dire situation for the country, so there is a big focus in that area, and that's why we wanted to revamp the traditional tech ed courses, to be more in line with what is needed for 21st century learning. I wanted to also highlight that in sixth grade, students have been focusing on design and modeling. They do use industry-standard software to make designs. They learn about engineering notebooks, which is very, very important, and they spend a lot of time working on teams and critically thinking about how to solve problems. So it is a very high-level skill. And in seventh grade, they focus on energy and the environment, and I am really thrilled to say that, for the first time at Chapag, we participated in the Connecticut Film Festival, and we did have a team of students who were selected to have their film showcased, focused on energy and how to disseminate information clearly using digital technology. And in eighth grade, they focus on robotics and automation, and you will see that in action this evening as well. So I'm really pleased to present to you Ms. Gambino, who was so highly recommended, has been a tremendous addition to the region, to Chapag, and she and her students are going to now display the work they've been doing in the class.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so as Mrs. DeBrito has said, some of the goals of the program were to provide a rich introduction to engineering, to increase the rigor and critical thinking that goes on within the program, to develop college and career readiness skills, and to help students to be able to communicate clear messages in a variety of ways. We work on engineer notebooks, we create videos, we create class presentations, and we do demonstrations. And this is also to help students develop skills to compete on a global level. So I'd like to call up Frances Dwyer and Ashley Basely, and they worked on a design challenge called the Can Crusher, and we're also going to ask that anyone who is sitting on this side, hold on, we'll use our safety goggles. Because we're going to give you a presentation. Can you girls come up over here first and explain the design? You could leave that there, just far enough away so that if there's any projectiles, get everybody through.
Welcome, ladies.
Yes. Hi, I'm Frances, and this is Ashley, and we were in Gambino's first trimester sixth grade class. What we did in our engineering notebook is we created a can crusher. The criteria had to be safe and expensive, easy to use, and of course, how it works. The constraints, it was built, it had to be built, built in four hours. So this was just a design in our notebook, we didn't have to recreate it, and Ashley and I were partners, and we sat next to each other in technology, and we decided that we wanted to bring our sketch to life.
Who's sketch is best?
That is mine.
Okay. Can you explain a little bit about how your sketch looked?
Yeah, okay. So our idea was that I label everything, so the back part is the wood. We were thinking that we could have a hole so the rope could go through it. We decided to use, we were going to use books, then we decided that we were going to weight because the books didn't work out, it didn't crush the can as well. Up here, we have the measurement of where the rope would be, and yeah.
Do you want to usher this in?
Basically, we were thinking of...
Ashley, can you speak up to the mic?
Basically, we were thinking...
Do you want to talk about your title a little bit?
No.
Okay, do you want to give us a demonstration?
There we go. For you guys.
For your safety, you gotta double fund.
Do you have glasses? Wait a second.
Why are the students not wearing glasses?
Why aren't they wearing safety goggles?
They will be. Check dial.
The projectiles are designed to come this way. Part of the board appreciation package.
So what we have to do is we have to make sure it goes high, to make sure it goes high enough, so it doesn't, so it crushes the can as well, so it won't go out, but yeah.
Good job.
So the next presentation we have is also a sixth-grade presentation, and this is Caitlin and Brianna.
I'm Brianna.
And we are talking about the Havi Organizer. The Havi Organizer is mainly to show how engineers can decide on what a new invention could be and how it can work.
What's the tool that you used?
We used the Havi Organizer Design Brief.
And what does the Design Brief do?
It helps you decide what is your client, what's your problem statement, and why are you doing it, and how the criterias are and constraints.
I'm sorry, was that the end part of that?
The criterias and constraints. This is my design. It was the tennis backpack. I made this design because I know that I'm a very unorganized person, so I should have room for everything to play with. I have extra room for the tennis racket, the tennis balls for practice, the shoes, and a change of clothes with some water. I thought of this idea because I know a lot of people have trouble carrying all that stuff to practice, and with a very tiny bag.
So this is my idea, and because I'm a tennis player myself, I have a lot of stuff to carry around, so this really helps us out with all our stuff we have to carry. On the left side, we have the balls where you can put charge in. In the middle, you have the tennis racket, and it's wider so it can fit, and then on the right, you have all your shirts, shoes, and that's it.
This is the design matrix template, and this helps you decide which design will be better, and not emotionally by the criteria. We had time, heavy duty, materials, money, product lifespan, and size. My design won by five and a half points.
And why did your design win?
Because it was better at a couple things that would just break us down, because we had a time limit.
And if you'll notice, this is very similar to the tool that was used for the long-range planning, when people had to decide on criteria and constraints, which would be the best option, so this is a real-world tool.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you very much, girls.
Good job.
I would like to call Elijah Ducey and Ethan Herbert, and they're going to explain a little bit to you about Autodesk Inventor, which is the real-world software that we use, that engineers use every day to design and build products.
Okay, I'm Ethan.
And I'm Elijah.
Okay, so Autodesk Inventor is basically what engineers use to start off with in design anything. So they design everything that they build on Autodesk Inventor. It's professional, everything, it's real-world, basically.
Can you tell us a little bit about your design? This was taken out of Ethan's computer yesterday, this is what he was working on.
Well, we were making a pegboard toy. We wanted it to be, to actually work, and all the parts to fit into the different holes.
How many parts do you have here?
Well, I have three there, but I had to take a hole out and extrude and cut out a square.
Can you tell us a little bit about what's going on over here?
Those are the legs that we have to make. They have to be perfect, they have to fit just right, so if there's even the littlest one millionth of an inch, it could not fit.
What are the parts that you have in here? What are the three parts?
Well, there is the pegboard, the, yes, the square peg, and the cylinder peg.
And this is, you didn't want to...
And that is what we ended up doing. We ended up using a tool called Extrude, and it shows that, it just shows how the sketch that you started off with, the 2D sketch, ends up turning into a 3D sketch.
Would you like to give a demonstration?
Yes.
They have such little room to work the mouse over here.
Okay, so we have to start a 2D sketch, which is up in the corner. Well, these are the planes. If that is the, this is the front plane, that's the top plane, that's the side plane. Most people sketch on the front plane, we are, we want to. And now we have to create a rectangle, which is going to be square. Well, we're going to dimension it so that it's square with one inch, not... Now we have to make the sketch. Extrude it to one inch. Now we have a cube. Okay, now we have to make a hole right through the center, so we'll do that on the front. So we have to make a center point circle. See those two lines, those are like the things that says directly in the center. Then now we have a half an inch circle. Now we have to extrude that. Now we have to cut, so we have to take that out, then we have to go through all the short orange. Okay, so now we should, try to cut that one inch, go through that. Okay, now we have a hole in that center. Okay, now we're going to make a square that pops out a quarter of an inch. Okay, we're using a two-point center rectangle, so that it'll be here to bind. Okay, now we have a square, it's out. Extrude it out, and now we have to make it pop out. Okay, now we have a cube.
Thank you, guys. That was a great demonstration.
That's kind of make it real, why we need a digital education, why technology is important.
Here is actually their finished project for the pegboard design, which they haven't gotten this far yet, but next they'll create a mallet, and they'll actually bring this into, first they create different pieces. This is one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different pieces that they then bring into an assembly file, and then they bring the assembly into a presentation file and animate it, so they could see that the pieces all work together. Okay, next I would like to call up Maddie Baker, Megan Tracy, Jack Ray, and Charles Oliver, these are seventh graders, and they're going to talk about their windmill design challenge. Energy and the environment is the topic of their year, for their course. Jack, would you like to tell us what we're looking at on the screen?
So that's the head of the windmill. That's where all the gears and the wires, all the technical stuff connects.
Who built this?
Me and Charlie.
Are you in touch with this one?
Yeah.
I think it's your design.
This is my design for a windmill blade. I searched up on the internet, and I changed it a little bit, so I had to make the degrees of the windmill blades at certain degrees, so the pitch would be just perfect for the wind to hit it. And the width, I had to make a certain length, so the wind would blow past it in a certain way.
Okay, can you talk a little bit about your measurement? How did you decide to use those measurements?
I saw the highest length, and I thought that was way too long, because the wind would just blow past it, so I decided to go with the shorter length and a more thicker tip, and yeah. So my windmill blade, that's my energy book, notebook, and my windmill blade is shaped like this is one of them, it's not fully done yet, but it's curved at the top and straight on this side, and it's the best shape, because like, as the wind hits it at the angle of attack, it lifts, which makes the windmill rotate, and I learned that the longer the blades, the more energy they produce, and the more elevated, like the tower is, the more wind there is. So, not in this case, because we're making a small range, so I had to change my measurements to match like the...
The model, the model that we have, which is right back here, set up for a demonstration. Do you guys want to give a demonstration? Do you want to add to the, I don't think there's anything else.
Well, I created windmill blades that, well, it's not up here, but I did take a picture of it. I created blades that were kind of like jacks, but they were a different material, not really sure what.
It's like a plastic, kind of a plasticine type of material.
Yeah, that.
I don't know what it is either.
It was convex, so it would pick up more wind in the flow of the, shall I call it the, wind?
Do you want to give a demonstration of the windmill in action? And just so you know, while they're setting up the demonstration, every student in class did a many research project, and they were able to look up different characteristics that might make their windmill blades move a little bit faster and pick up a little bit more energy. So based on their research, they were then able to design a set of blades that they would like, once they're done designing, done building their blades, we will lay them out on the tables, and they'll make predictions about which ones will work the best, and after they are able to gauge that with a volt meter, which you'll see right now, they will do some energy equations with work and power. Can you tell us how many volts it's generating of electricity?
The gear not here, so I'm gonna just go ahead and guess, because before it was like about, about a volt. about a volt, maybe like 0.75 volts or... It's not going to work if it's not here. But it depends on the amount of like the blades that you put on.
And the student who put those blades on is actually testing the number of blades. His hypothesis is that more blades will produce more energy. So he's testing a couple of blades versus many blades. Okay, thank you guys. Okay, at this point, we had one student who couldn't make it at the last minute. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the programming that gets the students ready for the robotics programming, which is really challenging. So if you take a look at the handouts that you have, I'm going to explain the first one, which is Scratch. And if you take a look, it has a little tiny cap, half of a cap on the edge of it. If you take a look at the code, this is one of... We do a couple of different projects with Scratch to build video games. Does everybody have this? Okay, and if you take a look at the code, it says when the green flag is clicked, set a variable to pick a random number between 1 and 100. So the computer will pick a number between 1 and 100. And it will display it on the screen with the next statement, which is say the number for two seconds. When the number is said for two seconds, the computer will determine if the number is odd or even. And the students have to create this all out of their own head. There's about eight different ways to do it. Once they create the random number generator, it has to say odd. If it's odd, even if it's even, and it has to make a different sound for each one. Once they create their project, they compare their projects to tell which one is most efficient. And they do a writing piece with that to explain efficiency in computer programming. So next I would like to call up... This gets them ready for the robotics programming. And this is a little bit difficult to see, so I actually made you a copy. This is Jared Martin and Sean Welsh. They're going to come up and tell us about how they create programs for the robotics, which is very similar to the logic used in the video game programming. But it's now they're coding by hand. They're actually typing in lines of code.
I'm Sean.
I'm Jared. I'm going to be talking about sensors and showing a video.
And I will be talking about the VEX testbed and how to program.
Do you want to show the animation first? Or do you want to talk about the program first?
So in this slide right here, I show all the basic sensors. Do you want me to just... Um, right. So right here we have all the... Right here we have all the basic sensors. The one on the bottom left is an ultrasonic sensor. The one on the top is a sound sensor. The one in the top right is a touch sensor. And the one in the bottom right is a light sensor. This is a basic animation on how light travels to the light sensor. And light has traveled through it. And it brought a signal to the brain of the robot, which would tell the robot to do something. And right here we have an ultrasonic sensor. And it detects the wave. And basically what an ultrasonic sensor does is it detects how far away it is from something. But the sensors we have in our classroom aren't very powerful. They can detect something maybe a few centimeters away from it. So this is a touch sensor. You push it and the value should be zero or one. And this is the sound sensor. It could create a kick or loudness. And what it will do is if it's greater than a certain loudness, it will... It could create a signal to various tasks.
Can you tell us how did you make this animation?
I use... Yeah, I use flash animation. And basically all you do is you draw images and print it right. And then you just have the brain last for a certain amount of time.
Why don't you talk about this program? Because they have a handout of that. And then you can explain this program.
So on the handout, this was one of the first programs that I coded for the VEX testbed up here. And the first couple of lines at the top that say Pragma, basically that's telling the brain or the program what sensors or motors are plugged into what ports on the brain. And then at the bottom half, the task made, that's the program itself. The first line that says wait one millisecond is telling the robot to wait for one millisecond. And then the parameter of 2,000 is 2,000 milliseconds or two seconds. And then the line that says wall the sensor value of the limit switch, which is this switch. While that's at zero, it's telling the robot to not do anything. And then while the sensor value of that same switch is at one, it tells the robot to turn the motors at full power. And then while the sensor value of the bump, which is the other touch sensor, is at zero, it tells the robot to keep moving the motors at full power. And then when that same sensor has a value of one, to turn off the motors. And then the program ends. So the program we are about to run is called the potentiometer program. And let me just make sure that the debugger knows. Let me turn that down.
Before you run the program, can you tell us about the debugger window that we're seeing?
The debugger window basically is... It has all of the sensors like in the window. And the values are like... So as I turn the gear, as you can see here, the value on the debugger window is going up. And the same with the bump and limit switch. As I push these, they change from zero to one. And so this program tells the robot that as the value of the gear or the potentiometer goes up, the motors slowly increase in speed. So... And so the code is telling...
Why don't you move that other one so everybody can see?
So the program is telling the robot that while the value of the potentiometer or gear is less than... Less than 2,048, to run the motors at quarter speed, which is 32. And I like turn this up. It increases in speed. So now it's running the program for while the potentiometer value is greater than 2,048. It runs at a quarter power. And then if I turn the potentiometer up all the way, it's on over to now at full power. Turn it off.
At this point, I'd like to also call up Hunter Wilson. And he's going to explain his mechanical engineering aptitude with a project that he created in coalition with the Science Fair this year. And he did just such a great job on it. I really wanted him to share this.
Okay, so my name is Hunter Wilson. And this is my robot. For the Science Fair this year, we were given a choice of what we could do. And I saw a robot on there and it looked interesting. And this, I kind of just built with my imagination. Didn't have any planning or anything. I just built it, whatever came into my mind, I put on it. So basically, it's what they just showed you just looks different. And for the Science Fair, I tested the gear configurations on it to see which would make it go faster. Gear configuration one, which is a big gear attached to the motor and a small gear attached to the axle, which spins the track. And then this is gear configuration two I have on it. And this is the slower one. So this one is the one that turned out to be the one that was slower. So, and...
I want to see if it works.
And it's going to run for a long time, so I'm going to turn it off. But that's pretty much it.
And last but not least, I'd like to call up all our student film festival participants who've created movies. And I'm going to ask Sam and Emma. We're going to present yours first, and then Maddie's group next, and then Noelia's group finally. I have to just warn you that the sound might be a little bit different. I may have to adjust the sound. I'm just going to ask you to cover your ears for a second. The sound... There's no sound on the first one, but I may have to adjust the sound for the second too. Do you girls want to talk a little bit about your movie first? Come on up.
Girls, you have to come up so we can hear you. Come on.
Tell a little bit about your project first.
Well, the category we did was the science category. And we did it on potential and kinetic energy. And we did a claymation so that would be easier for all ages to understand.
What were some of the problems that you encountered while creating your film?
The cropping of the pictures. There was too much like excess room around it.
Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to call up Maddie, Lizzie, and Ashley. And they did a movie called The Pretty Committee. And can you tell us a little bit about what we're going to see first and some of the problems that you ran into?
Well, we had a time constraint of 90 seconds. And our movie in the beginning was like two and a half. So we had to do some split screen shots. And so we had to go from program to program, Windows to Mac. And those caused some issues, but we got through it.
Yeah, we had to use... Yeah, we were Windows movie maker. And then we had to use Final Cut Express, which was on a Mac computer, which involved converting a lot of files and doing a lot of research. We had to look up tutorials because we had never used Final Cut Express before. So we had to look up a bunch of tutorials to figure out how to use it.
The sound on this might be a little bit loud.
Hello. Hey. So just got back from piano, the usual. What about you?
You know, just finished a painting.
Oh, cool. Thanks. What's Courtney doing?
I don't know.
I wish I was her.
Who doesn't?
Yeah, okay. I absolutely get her. Hey, bye.
I just want to be like them.
And I want to say, you know, they did work really hard on the split screen. I would not tell them how to do it. I made them use real old tools. They had to look up blogs and videos and tutorials. And they actually tried two before they found one that they really liked and would work with the version of the software that we had. So nice stuff. The last group is Noelia, Jordy, Tess, and Emily. And they created a movie about bullying. And do you want to tell us a little bit about this first before I click?
Yeah, so we use a lot of slow motion in it. We use a lot of like slow motion. And we had to crop out a lot of our scenes because some of them are longer and some of them had like a part of it that wouldn't really match with the rest of the film. So...
Based on diversity, it has to say like how people think of each other and how like you look at yourself.
Do you ever feel lonely or that you don't belong? People always tell you that you're not perfect, that your clothes are ugly and that your hair isn't straight enough. You feel alone. That no one cares. So why do you matter? The thing is, you're never alone.
So that's all we have for you this evening. Does anybody have any questions?
These are all... I'm sorry, these are all what grades?
These... The girls are all eighth grade.
So we saw sixth, seventh, and eighth.
You saw sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, yes, from all different areas. And I also want to say this is just a small sampling of what we do. We do a lot more things with NEX T-kits and a lot of other projects. But you know, we wanted to give you a big variety of things to see.
Thank you very much. Thank you all. Appreciate that very much. And thank you all for your hard work. Really is great work, the technology work. I appreciate it. All right, so going back to our agenda item 4.4, learning walk update. Teresa?
As Teresa gets ready to prepare, one of the things that was very important to me when I came to the region was to have the administrative team meet weekly, which we do. We meet every Wednesday, the school administrators. And then also to start to do learning walks and get into the classrooms together to see what's going on in our classrooms, where we're strong, where we need support. What does it mean that a teacher is asking high-level questions? All those kinds of things. So Teresa, who is in... Now, the procedure, there were two groups of administrators that each week, for three weeks in a row, would go into classrooms for each particular school. So we would spend two to three hours a week in a school for three consecutive weeks. And we gathered the data, we had iPads, and we had a spreadsheet that would calculate and tally all of the evidence that we were gathering. Specific examples that we were looking for were teacher behaviors and student behaviors. What is a teacher doing? What is a teacher providing to the students that's enhancing the learning? What are the kids doing? What experiences are they engaged in? What's the format? Are they working independently? Are they working in groups? Are they working in peers? How high of a degree of critical thinking was involved in the tasks? So there was a lot of data that we gathered. And we are now at the stage of looking at all of those results. And so we want to put in writing what those trends are, we want the information shared with each faculty at each building, and we want to determine focus areas for continued progress in the future. And again, everything that we have done is based on that theory of action, that if we gather relevant data, if we provide the professional development that's needed, then student achievement will increase. And it may seem, you know, difficult at times, but it's certainly, we're going in the right direction. And so that's the stage we're at right now, is analyzing those results. And so I did write an article for the district newsletter, but I wanted to talk a little bit about it and answer any particular questions that you might have. Not yet, huh? That's okay.
I'm sorry. Any information on the subjective data as well? Because you're gathering the objective data, right? Trying to gather those trends. But how about the subjective, the feel of the classroom, the energy of the classroom?
Classroom engagement was an area, and the rapport. Those two areas were also part of the instructional environment.
Mike, did you see this as really open-ended in terms of the data that you were gathering? Or did you really go in with specific criteria of what you wanted to measure? For example, did you go in saying, "I really want to look at, in this lesson, classroom engagement"?
No, it ran the gamut in every single class. So it was apples to apples.
But in the future, that's what we're going to be zoning in on, the areas of concern.
Sorry.
So I see here that the actual walks took about three weeks.
Per school.
Per school. But they were in series or parallel?
It was series, like, we spent time at one school for three consecutive weeks, then we transitioned to another school for three consecutive weeks, then transitioned to another school.
And was there, there was probably some kind of preparation then, prior to that, which was?
Yeah, we did. We calculated, we looked at a video, we went through a similar PowerPoint, talked about its theory of action, and then we took the protocol that was developed and actually watched the video and did a mock walkthrough before we went out to the schools.
And then, of course, now that the data comparison and thought work, based on, probably it'll take a few weeks to do.
Right.
Is this something that's going to be ongoing in a cyclical way, or going to be in an incremental way? Like, we should do this once a year, perhaps, or once every few years, or just repeat itself? Or is this a one-time thing?
No, the intent is that people see the value in it, and that it'll happen at the school level, so that teachers can go and see each other in the classroom, and that we can expand it that way, and not just have it be administrators.
It's also aligned with the new teacher evaluation program and the components we had gone over, to really calibrate what the administrators are seeing, teachers have an understanding of what's going on. And it's really powerful when teachers see areas that need to be worked on, as opposed to administration always saying, "Oh, we have to do this, we have to do this." So you really collect some hard evidence and data that you can then say, you know, "This is what we see, you know, what can we do? How can we make improvements?"
We're also expecting as the dialogue, as this is presented to faculties, teachers are going to start to think, "Wait a minute, I do that, I do that, why isn't it in the data?" They have to then reflect on, "What can I do to make it apparent and visible, so that we are all having that same conversation of reflecting on what's valued in the classroom and making it noticeable?" So that's a big underlying theme.
It's really about continuous improvement, you know, in the administrative staff, in the teaching staff, in the kids, always getting better. You know, no matter what you're doing, you can always get better, and you can always make improvements.
That's why I wondered whether it would continue.
No, it's been a continuum.
And by apparent, you mean, obviously, so it ends up being apparent to the students as well.
Absolutely, absolutely. Like, I'll give you a particular example. When we were in classrooms, we would ask the students, "What are you working on? What are you learning today?" And it's very different if a student says, "Well, I have to complete this worksheet", as opposed to, "I'm learning how to think about solving problems using proportions." Do you see the difference? And so it's getting that articulation across, so that the students are also thinking about what they're learning.
And I just wanted to remind folks that the new state teacher evaluation law relies forty-five percent of the evaluation will be based on student testing data, forty percent on observations, ten percent on parent feedback, five percent student feedback. The state has recommended three observations a year, so this is, as you said, is getting in line with the new law regarding teacher observations.
And the observations are all evidence-based. So as we're evaluating and assigning a particular criteria, there needs to be evidence to support it. And so that's why that, we're being on the same page, having the same dialogue, understanding and visualizing what we're looking for, and matches what the teachers are also thinking is critical.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anything else, Doctor?
Uh, no, that's it for me right now.
All right. Committee Awards, Mr. Brown, Communications.
I think we're done. We managed to omit this, which is the, as I said, maybe next year, when we refigure committees, we'll call it the Newsletter Committee.
Good job. We all talked about it before. Excellent job. Thank you.
Well, we don't have an education committee chair, technically. Marty was our chair, and I think it would probably be wise to wait until after the study and review until I want the chair to appoint an education chair. We do, of course, the education committee is a committee of the whole board. I don't have any report, but I know that our next board meeting, May twenty, is the education committee meeting. Valerie is not here for education connection. Facilities, Tony, anything to report?
Submitted the minutes, let me attend, and I don't have anything to say, so.
Any questions for Tony, anything? Facilities? All right, finance, Valerie again is not here. Bob, is there anything that you need to report?
No, we just met earlier tonight, and we're still on track of where we were to the budget at this point, so we'll have a motion next. G third for a transfer to the one percent.
All right, thanks. Is there anything else, Michelle?
No, I guess I would say that we're still tracking at one point four percent, so it looks like we might have the one percent to put in, so that's good. I'm barring some personal limitations.
Laird, for the last time, maybe I'll speak.
For the last time, I'll say no, then.
But I did get the email that you sent me, which regards to the subject is being examined by CAE. All right. Dr. Casatino, anything else on the vision, mission, strategic plans?
No, I think we're good right now.
Negotiations, anything, Greg?
Yes, we actually have received notice from the state vis-à-vis the fact that it's time to commence negotiations with the teachers.
Right.
So we will start to do that.
As some of you may know, state law requires, state law governs teacher negotiations, governs all negotiations, but teacher negotiations are heavily governed, and you have to start by a certain date, you have to finish by a certain date related to the passing of the town budget. So you have to calculate backwards when your negotiations start. If negotiations are unsuccessful, then you have to start mediation with a state mediator by a certain date. If that's unsuccessful, you have to start arbitration, the state arbitration panel by a certain date. So we've gotten notice from the state that we have to start, and we'll do it, policy, anything, Michelle?
We met April twenty-second. We spoke a little bit about some technology policies that will be coming in the future as technology is changing. We also looked at a new policy about staff being able to bring their students or their children to Region Twelve, and that policy is on the agenda for tonight.
Okay, thanks. Tony, anything on regional school repair?
We're still working on the drafting of the lease, and the repairs are being kept up as of now.
Okay. Michelle?
Well, I just wanted to, so, has the committee has met? I'm just wondering where, have we figured out how to move beyond the delay?
Yes, we figured it out. I drafted a provision.
Okay.
To do that, it's complete now, and I want to get it blessed, and then we'll move on.
That's what he said, okay, I got it. Good, good, good.
They like the concept, so.
Good.
This regional school repair committee is the committee pursuant to our lease for the primary schools that we're supposed to do an inspection each year, go through with the town spokes, try to agree on a list, so that's what they're working on, try to get that done to the current year. Technology.
So Michelle just said, you know, her daughter, last year, built a wooden frame, and this year she's making movies, and other kids are building robots. I don't think we're going to need a technology committee or something. She'll be doing very well, and it is with the administration.
It was impressive to remember that those students were middle schoolers. Yeah. And we wonder what's going on above, but hopefully, things aren't going to move up, and I'm sure they aren't, and they will, continue to do so. So that's great. All right. Transportation, Brad, anything?
Yes, that there was just a small issue with the van coming back from Abitac, and the kids had to be bused back, but otherwise, it's been smooth sailing.
Good, okay, thanks. Anything in addition, Pat, on long-range planning goal three?
No, it's under new business, so I can speak to it there.
All right, let's move on. There is no old business, any? All right, new business, seven one. Considering it's approaching approved funds to Castle Boos, SLAM, and A. Holland, these are separate, to provide costs for use in consolidation planning.
Yes. I've given you a paper here with three motions. Let me just talk about them. After the April twenty-second presentations by Castle Boos and SLAM, it was brought up that a couple of other scenarios should be considered before we move forward. So one of them is to get an understanding about the septic. The septic is something that needs to be done regardless of whether or not we have a consolidation, we don't have a consolidation, we do anything, we do nothing. So that's one issue. And Don has spoken to Arthur Holland and Associates, but bless you, for thirty-seven fifty.
Three thousand.
Three thousand, thank you, fifty dollars. Will research and provide the preliminary engineering services for approximate construction costs for new subservice septic system on the Chapaud Campus. Off the record, he's been told it will be around no more than five hundred thousand dollars, but we need that number. So that's the first motion. The second motion is to not exceed three thousand dollars. The Castle Boos, Castle Boos is the, excuse me, the architect that did the, keep the core of the building, put a middle high school on one side, and a pre-K to five on the other side. They are looking at their estimates, their contingency fees, to try to get it lower on their end without a cost. But then, what came up was to find out a cost to isolate the core of this building, demolition all of the outside classrooms in pieces, and then to renovate the core of the building, so that it's a standalone facility. So that was three thousand dollars.
Good. Go ahead.
Yes.
Where did that come from? That thought should be examined.
That came from...
Valerie.
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 Valerie? The long, I get my, so many meetings. It came from, I think, a lot came from the audience, who were a lot of members of the long-range planning committee, and then there were some board members who thought we should do those things.
All right, well, I'll let you go through with all of it. We can discuss more.
And then number three was the funds not to exceed five thousand dollars for SLAM, SLAM was the second presentation, to update their previous estimate of the new pre-K to twelve configuration, to include a new pool, to include another gymnasium, and to increase the size of the auditorium from three hundred to five hundred seats, and then also to give us a study of what the reimbursement would be on that, because a lot of that would not be reimbursable. So, those were the issues and the further studies that we need to kind of get a better picture, so that we can compare apples to apples and move forward.
All right.
What motions do you have, then? I haven't passed them out, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Well, I've got them. Somebody...
Okay.
So, I'll just open the discussion.
Oh, I have.
Dr. Casatino, I assume, in my hearing, is asking for certain motions. The first one, you recall, we had a presentation by the architects, they made their presentation. Castle Boos dealt with this building, kept the core of the building, and put on additions on this building. SLAM gave us estimates for brand-new buildings, and basically tear this one down total away. All right, so starting with the first one, three thousand seven, to approve funds not to exceed three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for Arthur Holland and Associates to research and provide preliminary engineering services for approximate construction costs for a new subservice septic system on the Chapaud Campus. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Michelle, second. All right, it's been moved in second. Is there any discussion, Alan?
Wasn't this, Tony, wasn't this part of the original, I'm always confused by the septic, like, it's coming up separately. Wasn't this part of the original study?
I don't think we've ever gotten a cost number.
This is to do things like per tests, and, you know, measure out the length of the piping and so forth, the pumping station, and that sort of thing.
Make sure it's actually physically possible to do this. But, as I recall, what we've heard is that there will have to be a system up here. There's a new construction, it would be, is that right? long-range planning committee, and then there were some board members who thought we should do those things.
Well, I'll let you go through with all of it.
Okay. And then number three was the funds not to exceed $5,000 for SLAM. SLAM was the second presentation. To update their previous estimate of the new pre-K to 12 configuration, to include a new pool, to include another gymnasium, and to increase the size of the auditorium from 300 to 500 seats, and then also to give us a study of what the reimbursement would be on that because a lot of that would not be reimbursable. So those were the issues and the further studies that we need to kind of get a better picture so that we can compare apples to apples and move forward.
All right.
What motions do you have then? I didn't pass them out, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Well, I've got them. Somebody.
Okay.
So I'll just open this up for discussion. Dr. Casantino, I assume, in a hearing, is asking for certain motions. The first one, you recall, we had a presentation by the architects, they made their presentation. Castle Booze dealt with this building, kept the core of the building, and put on additions on this building. SLAM gave us estimates for brand-new buildings and basically tear this one down total way. All right, so starting with the first one. $3,700, to approve funds not to exceed $3,750 for Arthur Holland and Associates to research and provide preliminary engineering services for approximate construction costs for a new subservice septic system on the Chapaud campus. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Michelle, second. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion, Alan?
Wasn't this, Tony, wasn't this part of the original, I'm always confused by the septic, like it's coming up separately. Wasn't this part of the original study?
Because I don't think we've ever gotten a cost number.
This is to do things like per tests and, you know, measure out the length of the piping and so forth, the pumping station and that sort of thing.
Make sure it's actually physically possible to do this.
Well, as I recall, what we've heard is that there will have to be a system up here. If a new construction would be, is that right?
So here on the campus as opposed to down below.
You understand, so that, this motion, the purpose of this motion is to determine an approximate cost of the building system there.
Which would be, would be a septic system for today and any of the options.
Right.
Right.
And I have here the proposal. Do you want, you want me to read the?
No.
Okay.
So in other words, this is what we need to do regardless because the septic system needs work, period?
Yes.
Well, it needs to be moved, period, and then we've been kicking around a lot of estimates, and this one will get us closer to.
A real, real number, whether it's 300 or 500.
I mean, it won't be a quote, but it'll be a lot closer than what we did. Because we've had numbers anywhere from 2 million to 350,000.
Right, that's what I was saying, so we narrowed it down somewhere near.
Yeah.
Tony, could you briefly let us know what triggered the study of the septic system in the first place?
So where it is now is illegal in that it's in the wetlands, it's sitting in the marsh essentially.
And the other part of it, Tony, is when you engage in trying to do something with this building, it calls that into a need for moving it out of that location that it was put in originally, and it was okay back then, but they're going to make you move it, and it needs to be in the higher, you call. Up higher than the wetland would be.
I was going to say, it's less than an ideal circumstance to put your septic system in a wetland. Soils in a wetland are, the reason it's a wetland is the Connecticut laws, it has poorly drained soils. The whole purpose of a septic system is to allow water to percolate through a system so that you treat the waste. If you put that in a wetland, you're constantly running into the situation of when the two meet, there's no place for the thing to percolate, and that's why they don't allow septic systems in wetlands. How ours got built in the wetland is probably because in that era, it was right when they were coming out of wetlands. The wetlands commissions weren't made the law of Connecticut until 1974, and this was probably done earlier than that, or right around the time that they started to have that. And, yeah, well, because of a lot of unfortunate decisions, that they, wetlands were destroyed, and then they realized, my gosh, they actually perform a valuable biological function, and so we're basically correct with the mistake maybe many years ago. I mean, if you ask common sense farmers in the area, they probably would have told you not to put the septic system in a wetland, but.
All right, so who, I think that's what his condition was back then. All right, so there's a motion to approve funds not to exceed $3,750 for Arthur Holland to conduct, to research and provide preliminary engineering services for approximate construction costs for new subsurface, not surface, subsurface septic system on a Chapaud campus. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and abstained. All right, it passes. The next motion that we're being asked to consider is to approve funds not to exceed $3,000 for Castle Booze to provide costs of, A, to isolate the core of the Chapaud building, and then B, renovate the new central core once it is isolated. I'll move it. Second? Second by Laird. This is the one that you said Valerie?
I believe it was Valerie.
I believe so, yes.
All right, but I mean, that has nothing to do with it, but I just don't know what the end game of this one is. You have a, you have a new, will have a cost of a new central core.
Well, I think, Jim, the end game of this is to try to figure out whether it's feasible to, in fact, retain the central core of this building and what it would cost in the event we decide.
I understand, with what, classrooms in another location, off the central core?
It would be with one or the other.
I mean, you could, I mean, there's no reason you couldn't connect it to it.
I understand.
But the idea is, what, how do you, how do you take this building down and retain portions of it that have been determined to be valuable, like the pool, etc.?
I understand.
That's the idea.
The idea, I think, also is to keep it with the pre-K to, the new pre-K to 12 building that SLAM presented, that doesn't have the pool, so the gym and the cafeteria, and the auditorium, sorry.
Okay.
You also have.
I'm sorry, Kelly?
Is this envisioned as a community building with pool and a gym, or is this part of the school facility?
Both.
Is it a both or is it a?
It, and it's, well, I can't speak as to what it would be exactly, but my assumption would be it's a school building and used by the community as it is now.
It is a community recreation site.
No, it would primarily be a school building, that's the idea, but it's like the pool is right now, the pool is for the educational mission of the school, but because there are times during the morning when it's not used for the school, students aren't here yet, the community uses it. So it's like anything else, it becomes a double usage.
That would be my assumption, that it would be the Chapaud middle high school facility subject to community use, as it is now.
Keeping the pool as it is or a new pool?
No, it says renovate.
No, renovate.
Renovate.
I don't know how you do that.
I don't either, but I like.
Well, I mean, I know the concern, for example, that the gymnasium, I think it was 300 or some odd seats in the proposal, and the auditorium, I'm sorry, and the auditorium we have now is 1,000 seats, you know, so it's.
1,200.
Oh, 500?
Yeah.
500.
Well, then I was talking about the auditorium, but, all right, I won't get into it.
That's the auditorium, it's 500 versus 300, and then the question on the gymnasium is because they were putting a smaller gymnasium in the proposal, and yet the concern is that right now our middle school has to take its basketball team over to Washington Primary School because there isn't sufficient room for the, for the high school basketball team and the middle school basketball team to use the gymnasium we have. So the question is, why are we going smaller when we can't even, we don't even have to add the facilities for our current usage? So can we retain a piece of the building? Why tear it down if it's useful and can be retained? That was sort of the idea.
Anyone else? Yes, Kelly?
Yeah, I'm hesitant.
Oh, no, no, go ahead, Kelly.
I think the amount is minor. I'm a little concerned that we are going to continuously spend prior to referendum on consolidation issues of any kind. I would be more comfortable if we had a referendum that said, yes, you can change your plan for the schools before we went and spent a lot of money on consolidation. And if every week we see 3,000 here, 3,000 there, 10,000 here, it's going to add up.
Well, I agree with that, but I'm assuming that's not going to happen. I assume that we'll take them as they come, but I'm assuming it's not going to be a lot of.
I'd also like to know if there are cost estimates that are coming forward for plans that do not include full consolidation, and when we will see the plans for how much we'll be saving on the other side of the ledger on the part of, you know, some staff and administrative services. I think that's something I really like to see.
The Long Range Planning Committee is going to be making a presentation to us in June. Look at your schedule. Dr. Casantino said, well, let's see, we did make, make 15, well, if you look at the scheduling, you can see at some point there will be a presentation to us as with full detail.
On June 3rd, you'll get a free, a full detail presentation. On June 10th, you'll get also another detailed presentation of costs over many years. June 3rd, you'll get from each committee, but you are certainly more than welcome to come to any of these meetings beforehand. I mean, we have a meeting on Monday, and we have, all the resources are online, so anyone who wants, go online, they're all there. You know, Greg put together a staffing cost, you know, Gary Lord has put together, there's a lot on there, so you'll see things there, but nothing has been presented yet to the board because we're still working.
All right, and Alan? So I guess just offhand, I mean, is it, Tony might know this, keep, always bugging Tony because I know you know the facilities so well, does it even make sense that are, you know, the functional vital organs of the building located in that area? In other words, if you were to.
They're under the cafeteria.
Huh?
They're under the cafeteria.
They're under the cafeteria.
Which is part of the core.
Is part of the core, part of what's going to be retained?
I mean, since, I think the primary concern is the gym, the auditorium, and the pool, if you're not going to use the cafeteria, then you have to look at, if there's a possibility you could rearrange that too. I mean, heating systems today are not, modern systems are running on gas and are, you know, under the size of the boilers that we've got and so forth. So, I mean, there's a lot of things you can do, it depends on how far you want to take the renovation.
I mean, does this seem logical? I'm just asking because it seems to be a response to Valerie's request, which is nice that we act so swiftly on her request, but I'm just wondering how this is that it appears to be something that is not quite renovation and not quite new, as a lot of our plans are, and it just seems.
It is renovation.
It is renovation, but we might have to, you know, we might convert to gas from electric, we might have to move everything from a no longer existing cafeteria to under, next to or above this area. I'm just wondering how practical it is to consider it as an option before we even invest in.
The idea is to retain the core of this building, as I said, the cafeteria, the pool, and the auditorium at a minimum. Folks think that that's, those are worth saving, they don't necessarily disagree, and so it's to present a cost, option, a cost for that option in the event that the rest of the building goes down.
Well, yeah, I was going to say, I mean, the real, I think the real value of it, Alan, is that people were concerned, they were looking at two different options. One of them was to build a new school without a pool and without, with a smaller auditorium and a smaller gymnasium, or renovating and adding a elementary school where we're sitting, a middle, new middle high school on the other side of the core and retain the core. Those were the two, two of the options that were being looked at. And the question is, if people think there's a value in the pool and the gymnasium, can you make use of what you've got? The whole purpose of the study is to figure out whether it's feasible to even use it. For example, if they determine that the way their structures are built, it renders it unfeasible, which you'd have to take them down completely, rebuild them because of the way the roof lines work, the supports are for walls, and how much of this you'd have to retain. They can come to the sense of whether or not it's going to be feasible, and if it's not feasible, then when you're looking at the, if the pool becomes a value, for example, or you may be able to expand the size of the auditorium and the gymnasium in the proposal, but if the pool becomes a value, then if you're going to build an entirely new building, you have to tack on the cost of building the pool. So the point is, can we retain it or can we not? Is it feasible or is it not? We're trying to answer questions, and one of the reasons why we spend money here and there, why we do things, is because as we examine alternatives, questions arise. And so rather than going to it blind, and rather than going to it on what Valerie has often said, she doesn't feel she doesn't have sufficient information, it makes sense to have sufficient information, it's an opportunity to do it. And I have discussed it with Bob to ask him the primary question I had, which is, do we have this money? And the answer is we do, or at least that's what Bob was going to make.
Hold on.
So I think that's, I think that's critical, that we do have the money, we are, we are able to do it, and we can answer questions that will either lead us in one direction or another, but it will keep us from wasting time putting a lot of work into something that's not feasible.
Michael?
Another value I see to it is beyond the long-range planning process, some of us are interested in some of these facilities, such as the pool, and see that we might need to do renovations regardless of what we're doing. And I'm hoping what would come out of this study would be, what are some of the more cost-effective upgrades that we could make to the pool to make it more of a resource, not only here at our school, but for the communities as a whole? For example, it doesn't take a genius to know that the locker rooms probably could be upgraded significantly at a relatively small cost. So I'm hoping that that study would come out with that kind of detailed information and some of the costs that would be associated with all those upgrades.
Kelly?
A number of months ago, I sent Dr. Casantino a story about a pool renovation that happened a few down in the valley in Shelton or somewhere, and it cost more than $9 to renovate their pool. That's bad news. But the good news was that they got an incredible amount of reimbursement for it, I'm not sure why. But these things are certainly worth looking into. Our community does use this facility, whether it's just being a board of education, or town leaders, or recreational use, I don't know, but when you close three community schools or block walling, all the people that use those gyms are going to come here. It's going to be a very large demand, because I think they're busy almost all the time. So it's worth pursuing just to find out what the real cost factor is, if there's any reimbursement. I don't know how they get reimbursement such highly, but they did.
Okay. Alan?
Well, I, you know, it makes sense from that standpoint. At some point, I thought it was, maybe I still do, it's kind of a, kind of a have your cake and eat it too kind of situation, because it seems as if there's a lot of talk about how this poor building is just so unfortunate and needs to be destroyed as opposed to being renovated, yet now we're talking about renovating part of it that we want to keep.
None of that has been decided.
No, it hasn't been decided, but I'm just saying, you know, it just seems, you know, it's a matter of will, it's a matter of will and intention, not necessarily cost, because now we're spending a little bit more money to see whether we might, might be worth keeping the, you know.
It's to present the, us ultimately, us and then ultimately the people with the information in order to make decisions.
Yeah, it might help, as I said, it might help kind of even out these.
I'm sorry.
It's, we have that information, we have questions that are coming from the community and coming from board members. We need the answers to not go blindly into this. We've been very transparent, and there's no reason that we shouldn't when they have these questions that they want answered, and this $3,000 seems minimum to see if we can utilize the space, if there are other options that would make everyone happy. We're always trying to give and take. This might be something else, we just need the information. So I support the motion, and I'd like to move the motion.
Wash it, was that a question? Is there any, is there anything else?
Just one other piece of information about this core. If you looked and it was mentioned about the cafeteria and what's below it, that's your powerhouse, if you will, and if it's retained, or if it can be retained, it becomes a feeder, if you will, to these ancillary buildings. If not, you have to start with full, and redo a lot of work because you'd have to redo the transformers and everything else and get them to those little buildings. So if it can be retained, there is another side benefit, but it's, it's a hidden piece of this core. It's down in the basement.
Wait, do you mean that you could use it for saving this core or to possibly a new school on the premises?
No, you need to, somewhere on this campus, you need to create this place where you start distributing power from it, and there's power, the big transformers right in the back of that cafeteria on the ground, and it feeds in there, and it's possible, because briefly talking with some of the engineers, that's a way to do it if it's feasible, and you need to know that to do the other pieces. It may turn out that it's not feasible, but you need to get the answers.
Anything else, Emily?
No, I think it was, I think it's valuable to do. I think it will answer a few questions that a couple people had. That said, that Castle Booze number was scary, and this was a way to know if it was, the entire thing was scary, or if it's going to be just as expensive in a different way. We kind of have to come at it from all angles, is my feeling on it, and it will give us some information.
All right. The motion is to approve funds not to exceed $3,000 for Castle Booze to provide costs of, to isolate the core of the Chapaud building and renovate the new central core once it is isolated. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and abstained. One abstention, Alan. All right, then the third and final one here is to approve funds not to exceed $5,000 for SLAM to update the previous estimate of the pre-K-12 configuration, to include a new pool and auxiliary gymnasium, and increase the size of the auditorium from 300 seats to 500 seats from the initial study. Included in these is the eligibility factor of state reimbursement. Is there anyone who wants to make such a motion? All right, it's been moved. Seconded by Michelle. Is there any discussion? Alan?
Why is SLAM always so expensive? Why does it cost $5,000 to do this?
I can, I have an answer to that.
Oh, really?
Okay, as far as I know. One of the reasons, I asked that same question, one of the reasons that SLAM is a little more expensive now than Castle Booze is Castle Booze has already received a lot of money from the Board of Education to do a capital needs assessment. They received $35,000, and the first concept was $19,500, where SLAM at this point has really only received $9,800. So that's one of the reasons why you didn't get the, the definition of classrooms and layouts and stuff. We didn't pay for that with SLAM. So where Castle Booze has maybe some of these numbers already, because remember, their initial, their initial option had already that inner core. SLAM is really adding on and doing some more work, so that's the reason, according to Don.
Laird? In this motion, it says to increase the size of the auditorium. Is that the existing auditorium or the one they're proposing?
Is that the existing auditorium, or the one they're proposing?
One, every proposal's one.
Well, I just wanted to say that I think it's unfortunate that it cost so much to get the answers that we need, but I feel that we need to do this because we realized as we were looking at the proposals, we weren't comparing two similar projects. And so if we, there was too much value judgment, we're really looking at, we're looking to compare equal program offerings versus operational costs. And we weren't, we didn't have equal program offerings, because the pool and gyms and the smaller auditorium were left out. So I think it's unfortunate that we have to pay to get that, but it's an answer that the Long Range Planning Committee needs to report.
Yeah, I felt we were really comparing apples and oranges with these two plans, too. And I was not happy with SLAM's presentation. I felt it was very generic. They put a multi-sided figure down on the map, where it seemed to fit, and I think we got generic estimates on, you know, 300-seat auditoriums, 500-seat, whatever. I don't think it was specific to our needs. I thought that the lack of classroom specificity and detail was really glaring, and I, maybe we've paid another contractor a larger amount for these studies, but we should figure out where we are in this process. Do we want two different firms to go against each other with similar plans? Do we want people to be creative and come up with different plans? Do we, is this a big process? Are we looking at who's cheaper, or, I mean, what are we doing this for? Because what's resonant was so different, that it didn't even seem to address the same question. I don't, I don't think that-
They didn't address the same question.
Yeah, I don't think that the information we got was actionable, because it wasn't detailed enough from SLAM. And so we should either upgrade that information, if we're gonna continue with them, not just for these two items, but for the whole project, it seemed very vague. And we need to decide why we're bringing these people in, and what their mission is, because they seem to have a different mission, as well as the amount of specificity that they thought had a break in the town.
Well, as I understood it, Castle Booze was working with this building. They kept the core, they built additions on both sides of the core of the building, and gave us that. And SLAM did new construction. Now, you know, maybe they both should have been asked to do the same thing, or, you know, I don't, I hear what you're saying.
But you can say the specifications, let's say. Let's say that if they're gonna do, if they're gonna have, you know, 90 classrooms, then they both should come up with plans that have 90 classrooms, and show us where they're gonna be located. I mean, to be more specific-
Go ahead.
Can I address it?
Yes.
We, both architects had the same numbers. So if you went and you looked, they each had, if you had to go into the packets, and I think everyone has it here, if not, we have it in central office. It tells you how many, they each have the same amount of classrooms. They each have the multipurpose room for the elementary school. They each have everything, they each have administrative offices. They have everything. We did not pay SLAM to do that detailed drawing, because we're really only looking at the concepts and the conceptual architect this time. It's not a educational spec at this point. Okay? So, I mean, certainly SLAM can do it, it's just that it costs us more money. Now, I'll just tell you, the reason we went with SLAM and we went with Castle Booze, is that Castle Booze, and this was done before I got here, Castle Booze was hired to do this capital needs study on this building before I was here. And they had a lot of information. And SLAM was hired, I think, three years ago, to build a new, was involved in the consolidation or drawings or whatever-
Four or five years ago.
-four or five years ago, and they could just update their information. That's why it only cost us $9,800. So, I mean, you know, everything costs money. That's the issue. Everything costs money. So, you know, it's-
Okay. Thank you, Alan. So I do appreciate how, the more you know, the better. It really is important to know exactly what, what different options cost. I, I, though, I do kind of, what Kelly said registers with me, though, as far as what is, what is cart before the horse? More money spent on, you know, one particular set of options, as opposed to others. And so I'm abstaining from these kind of as a protest, because I'm on the, I'm on the, I try to be as neutral as possible, but I am on the, you know, any other option than consolidation first, side of the fence. So I always believe that the best way to make a decision, of whether it's consolidation or not, is to have as many facts as possible. And I've been asking for facts about the effect of closing elementary schools in towns on property values. And I've been asking for facts on the cost of, of the different options that each town would have, as far as repurposing, or mothballing, or destroying the no longer needed buildings in the towns, if there is a consolidated building. And there are no studies that we've been asked to pay for, for those. So I feel that it's either one-sided, or it's premature till we've made a decision on this. So I agree that we need this information, I'm gonna abstain from voting yes on it. I would really appreciate it if, if I could send an email to Pat and get some motions next time we meet, the way Valerie was able to for these, it would be great. I look forward to that.
Well, I was gonna say, the reason you don't have those is because there's a process ongoing to identify and obtain estimates from a consultant, to look at the school issue, the closing issue, the evaluation issues, and then have, that's being done, just don't have it yet. We don't have, you know, we don't have the estimate, we're waiting for it to commit, so we can't come with a number, obviously, if we have that. As far as these other things, the reason why these particular items have to be studied, and facilities was interested, because we didn't want to go into this process of talking about schools, building schools, or consolidating schools on this campus, if it wasn't feasible to do so on this campus. And it was just no point in wasting everyone's time. We weren't gonna go in and have a full-blown set of designs done, because why would you waste that money? The only time to do the designs, when you start figuring out where the classrooms are, and how many classrooms, and how big they are, is once you develop ed specs, and once you decide how big you want them to be, once the public is authorized, you can move in that direction, in terms of actually building. There's just no point in spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on architects, since you've actually had a bond issued, and you know that you're going forward with the structure project. But what we wanted to do, is we wanted to use firms, as Pat said, that had experience, that had a reservoir of information, so we could do it efficiently, and just get a temperature tested, can you build? And if you did, where would you build this, where could you build it on this campus? And in order to, in order to not have to take down the school, put the warehouse the kids somewhere, and then build, can you build it somewhere else on the campus? And so it required that. And that's the reason why it was done this way. And I think it was a pretty efficient process. And the idea is, we didn't go out and study every aspect of it, so now we're having to fill in some blanks, and that's what this is about. That's why I support this particular, particular motion. But stay tuned, Alan, we're gonna get you what you need.
Susan.
Correct. Could you be a little more specific as to when those estimates are going to be?
As soon as we get a response from, from contractors. I mean, we discovered one contractor that was suggesting to us, let me do the work.
So prior to that June 17 meeting, where the, the board would-
Can't answer that question. We don't control the people, they have to respond, they have to get back to us. You have to understand, this is, this study on elementary school, the impact on closing them, is not a study where you're gonna go out and find this kind of information on a Connecticut basis, that's gonna be relevant. They're gonna have to do this, and they're figuring out the methodology in order to figure out what it costs. I mean, they've gotta decide how exactly to get us the information pertinent, because they don't wanna come in with, just, they don't wanna just go investigate a bunch of studies and bring information, and it's not relevant. They wanna make sure that they can give you something solid, if anything exists, to predict what the impact would be on a, on a Connecticut town like this, if closing it. Doesn't do us any good to know what the impact would be on a town of 50,000 people. I mean, we really need to know what it would be, if that information exists. They may be looking for something that's not there, but, and then we, that's good to know that, too. If there's no way to base a decision, you need to know that. But that, that's what they have to do. So I think that's the reason why it's taking a little longer than we had hoped, is they're trying to do it carefully, to figure out what it costs to get this information, so they get us what we're looking for. And I think that's it.
Prior to the board, prior to the board making a, any kind of decision as to-
Oh, yeah, that would be the idea.
-what to go forward with.
That would be the idea, yes, I mean-
We would need that information prior to June 17, there's just no question, because that is part of, that's part of the overall cost, that ultimately the voters would need to know, not just the cost for the school, but the, also, the impact and, and the cost to the town as well. That needs to be part of the dialogue prior to June 17.
We understand, but just bear in mind, I can't run into the person's office, grab them by the neck and say, I want it down. I mean, we have to wait till it arrives, and then we're gonna have to vote to authorize it, and then they're gonna have to commence the study, complete it, and deliver it. And we're trying to do this as fast as possible, so we, we have, they understand that the time parameters, we've gotta have this soon.
And if I could just add, the board is voting in June, but the public's not voting until before. So I don't necessarily see that we have to have that information in order for the board to make an informed decision, because they may not go to consolidate. I don't know what you're going to start, that's up to you. But we're doing our best. But I have done a little research myself, and I've gotten some information from a lovely lady in Bridgewater. There are articles and research that shows it has an impact on real estate, there are articles that show it doesn't have an impact. When I've spoken to Jonathan Costa, he has made it clear that 18 towns in Connecticut have closed their high schools, and that has no impact on real estate property values. So that, there's, you know, it's statistics, you know, you can always go either way. But I would hope that the board, you know, it's really important for me, as someone who's been through this process with many people, that the board makes a decision before we end this school year. And the board changes, because tomorrow we have elections, good luck to everyone, but, you know, we don't want a new board to say, oh, we're gonna start again from ground zero, because this is really a lot of work.
Alan.
What, a couple things. What, is this the valuation company that we talked about last week?
Yeah, it's a firm that has experience in doing mass valuations for town, as well as individual valuations for residential and commercial properties, and it's a company with widespread capabilities in that area, and that's one of its-
And they would have to pick a similar town, I guess, and do a study on that.
I don't know, what they may do is, they may look at the, the list of towns that have closed schools, they may look at those to try to see if they can do it. They were talking about what, you know, they hadn't filled me in on the exact verbiage, but I explained to them your position specifically. And I said, this is what we have to know. We have to know whether closing a school in a town, looking at the types of towns, and I told them which towns were involved here in this, you know, if you close a school, what is the impact on property values? And that's what people want to know. And so I think it's the kind of thing where it's not a question that a valuation expert is asking.
Do you think it's, I was, first of all, do you think it's something, some of the studies that I've seen, and maybe that Pat's alluding to, seem to be academic in nature?
But, you know, hold on, I'm sorry. We're a little off topic here. We've got a motion on the table, and this is an entirely different discussion, that was not in front of us at this moment.
Okay.
As to the real, I understand the importance of it, but it's off topic.
In closing, I just wanna say, specifically, we hope you're talking about elementary schools, Pat, specifically elementary schools, because Washington closed their high school, and Bridgewater's never had one, so.
I totally know.
But it was me that, I assume it would be-
She didn't, she didn't specifically, she didn't-
Closing for all three towns, all three towns. All right, so there's a motion to, I didn't, I'm sorry, Tom.
I, I'm wondering why we would, why it only costs $5,000 for costing you to have a school and gym, and cafeteria, and the entire program of us, that's the whole building. If we should either decide we're gonna pay these people equivalent funds, or get them to do something equivalent, or we should just give them $5,000 here, $5,000 there. The other thing that their plan was missing, in addition to the general vagueness, was that I don't think they had a cost number for remediation. They had demolition, but demolition here is, you know, anybody can come down and bulldoze this place. But remediation is where, it's a swamp, for a building built in 1969. I thought that was a glaring error.
Is that the SLAM or the-
No, I felt that, that was the second.
Excuse me, I think they, I think they did address it, but they said they couldn't really give you the number.
Yes.
They said, we couldn't tell you that until we got into the demolition process.
Well, no, I think that there's enough, I, I think that Castle Booze had firmer numbers, and I think there are other numbers on similar buildings out there, they can give a professional firm a, a good idea of what range we're talking. So I was very uncomfortable with that, because those come out to be major costs. And I think if we're gonna spend $5,000 with SLAM, it should be to get that, perhaps, or something, you know, I'm not comfortable with this number, but therefore-
Can you have them give the abatement as well, for that $5,000?
Yes. So you're looking for also a more formal cost for the, not only the demolition, but the, whether it's asbestos, whatever-
Right, right, the abatement and-
The abatement and-
That would be nice. Remediation. More tell us if it's in their plan, where it is.
Okay, well, I'll ask them to put it in there. I mean, that's, and that's where Castle Booze had their contingency money. That's why their contingency was, was high, because that's where they put it there. So I can definitely look into that.
All right.
I wouldn't put it in the motion, though, but I would look into it as far as asking them to handle it.
There's a motion on the table to approve funds not to exceed $5,000 for SLAM, to update the previous estimate of the pre-K-12 configuration, to include a new pool, an auxiliary gymnasium, and to increase the size of the auditorium from 300 seats to 500 seats, from the initial study, including this is the eligibility factor of state reimbursement. That's the motion, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
All right.
Any opposed? One.
Kelly, any abstention?
One, any abstained? One abstained. All right, and the superintendent's also gonna look into the remediation cost with regards to SLAM, to see if they can improve that as well. All right. Item 72 on the agenda, Healthy School Nutrition Program. Bob?
This is the same motion that we annually have to do, and basically we follow all the guidelines. The thing we don't do is to participate under the child nutrition standard as published, because if we feed you from doing your fundraising, your activities at the elementary schools, and anything outside of that cafeteria, to restrict what you're allowed to do. So although we're following everything, if we were to say, and say we followed it 100%, you would lose a whole bunch of options for this.
So what is the motion that you need, Bob, with the draft?
Motion is to not participate under the Connecticut-
Okay.
-nutrition standard as published by Connecticut Department of Ed for the school year 2013, 14.
I saw a move that we not participate.
Seconded by Fran. Is there any further discussion? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? 7-3. First reading, policy 5118.2, children of non-resident certified and non-certified staff qualified tuition reduction. Michelle.
This is not a policy that we've had before, so it's a new policy, it's not a revision of an old policy. Dr. Constantino actually made us aware of this policy, because she was familiar with it, and it seems like a good idea on several levels. One, for possibly having some more students in our schools, which is great. Another is to offer a benefit to hold on to teachers who have expressed an interest in this in the past. I don't know that it's a huge, I don't know how many staff it would apply to, but there's very little of cost involved, so if you have any questions after reading through it.
First question is on paragraph four. It says that the board will charge non-resident staff, et cetera, et cetera, that education with those services exceed the school's districts per pupil expenditure. Does that literally mean what you say? Not the school in which the child is, you know, we have different per pupil cost during school than in overall district? This is the overall district?
Yes.
Is there anything we need to do to make sure that that's clear?
I don't know, and, you know, it's interesting, that's a good point, because we calculate-
Hold on, hold on, this has to do with the 404, 504 plans. It doesn't have to do with your average child.
I understand that, but it says, except in the cases of children with 504 plans, the board will charge non-resident for the provision of special education related services if those exceed the school. All I wanna know is, what do we mean by school districts? Because, for example, if- Because, for example, if, let's say, for example, the child were at, were at Bridgewater, at Burner. If, you know, we've got data out there that indicate that Burner costs $32,000, so we would have to pick up everything up to 32. We would, we wouldn't have to pay if the cost of providing the services didn't exceed, what, the 23, the 24,000 dollars? I just want to be clear on that because we don't want to have to litigate that.
I think it is clear.
Region 12, so. It says the school district.
I think that's reasonable. Okay. All right, well, the legislative history will reflect that we made that clear. The last paragraph, eight, for one, I'd like a little bit of a clarification, and two, I think we don't really want to change. We're saying, we're speaking in the third person. We changed it to say once or you can't.
That was supposed to be changed.
Yeah, we have to really fix that.
I know, it's like, that wasn't.
I thought that was changed.
That wasn't the version I read.
It's a little casual.
Yeah, no, because I wouldn't put it forward.
I thought it was changed, maybe.
This is not the one that I saw.
It's not the one you saw, but I rewrote it. I rewrote it. I don't know, we must have crossed wires somewhere.
Yeah, well, I, it's the one I got, so that's why.
Can we email you?
Well, I think it's on the web correctly.
Yes. We'll email it you tomorrow.
I'll check, don't worry about it.
Yeah.
All right. What does it mean?
The essence, the essence of that, though, is that once, because we stated up, up top that, that in order to be considered, to be accepted, it's based on enrollment. You know, you'll be permitted to enroll based on our availability. So, for example, if we had 23 students in that grade and your child would bump to an extra teacher, the superintendent has the right to say, no, I'm sorry, we don't have room for your child. However, once you've been enrolled, even if three other families move in, you, you can't be made to leave.
Pushed out.
Yes, you can't, you can't be made to leave. So that child, once they're enrolled, they have the right to stay so that no parent has to feel like each year they're waiting to see if their child gets to stay.
Well, see, and the reason, you know, I, I'm not suggesting that that's a bad problem to, to, I mean, it's a nice thing to do to not bump them up a year, but it could make the program extremely expensive one if you are at that cusp one, and there's one person being here paying 5% tuition, then cost addition $71,000 to the inclusion. So that's all, I'm not suggesting, I think it's something we should consider, we should talk about.
Well, and I have a feeling that the superintendent, if that one child was very close to the cusp, might make that decision. I also know that as the class size, what we feel is okay for class size increases as the children get older, so once they're here, hopefully that threshold wouldn't be met because of one child.
Yeah, no, you're probably right, you're probably right.
Greg, I just sent you a link to the language, but here it is, it's the original version that we all approved. Number eight should read, once a child has been registered in region 12, he, she cannot be discharged based on fluctuation of enrollment numbers. That sounds a little more professional.
Yes, I.
This was clearly a conceptual draft. Kelly?
So based on that language.
Kelly?
I have three questions or points. First, if we all of a sudden find a kindergarten in capacity and someone has been an employee here and they have three children, can we say no, they can't bring their child here?
What's the answer to that? The answer is yes, right?
Yeah, we could say no, absolutely.
Well, could I just offer a suggestion there? We could say no for a specific elementary school, at least right now. We have three. We could say, at Washington Primary, the answer is no. But if you would consider sending your child to either Roxbury or Bridgewater, the answer would be yes.
And that determination would only exist for kindergarten students, not for someone who'd be in that grade.
No, anytime they enter.
Yeah. If they push the magic button. Or to create a new section, we wouldn't do it.
If you hired somebody that moved to this, it might, it might not start out as kindergarten grade.
They might want to transfer their sixth grader.
And if we have no room, we can say we have room. Is that something that an employee could come and question us about fairness or discrimination?
How?
Well, I guess the other question is, is this policy, is this tampering out to an amendment of the contract, whatever, if you're an employee with a contract and say that this is a benefit? I don't know if it is. I mean, I think it's, I think it's something we, I think it's something we're not obligated by contract to do. We don't have to do this.
No.
We're just creating a policy. Although I would like, the one thing I would really like to know before the second reading is, is going to, is whether or not we've been to council, and whether or not council thinks this is better handled as a contract amendment and not so much. This is one other thing that was occurring in the back of my mind when I was reading it, and I said, well, maybe I'm being too prescriptive.
Greg, I had that same question at the committee level and had assured me that this is based on a policy that Bethel's had for a number of years now.
Uh huh, absolutely.
And that it did get run by, by Donald's counsel.
Well, I know, but we haven't run it by our.
But we can, I can run it twice.
I don't think you would want to put it in a contract.
Yeah, I don't.
I'm not sure you do.
Once a minute, it's harder to get out.
And I just want to understand the interplay of that because if it's a policy, does, could it give rise to agreements?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I mean, my guess is no.
It's not in the contract.
Kelly?
Second point, things do happen in life, and sometimes our employees need to move themselves from their position because of a life emergency or something. I would hate to see a child who's enrolled in their high school and all of a sudden their parent is no longer employed here for reasons not of their choosing to not be able to finish or not be able to complete a year and have to transfer. I think that's kind of rough on the kid.
We do let them finish the year, you know, but if they don't work here, it's just like when a family moves out of Washington or out of another place, they have to go where you live.
We've taken our district enrolled, enrolled students from our district based upon all the same kind of criteria and charged them, that's where tuition's at.
I guess what Kelly's saying is, if a parent leaves, a parent teacher leaves, what Pat is saying, that that student will be able to finish that year, but the next year, no, they're no longer employed.
Well, they could ask, they could ask, though. We have in the past allowed students to tuition in from other towns. And we would, and we set the tuition. You get to decide.
Right, it's just then at that point, it's a non-employee petition in as opposed to an employee.
Right.
Both would have to petition in.
Kelly?
Greg, a quick question. If Dr. Constantino has any idea as to the approximate size of the pool, let's say that this one in for next year, what would we be talking about? How many?
I honestly, I don't know. I know that, I know for sure that there's one teacher who's very interested. I know we have a young staff who have, you know, young children, so we may get a couple or five.
Have we done a survey of the staff?
I haven't yet. I didn't want to do a survey of anyone until the board.
We've gone down that road.
So that's why I have not, I don't want anybody.
No carpet for them.
Yes. The court, the cart and the horse thing always gets me.
How many children out there exist of?
There are a lot that exist. How many would like to come here, I don't know at this point.
Any else?
I don't know if it's going to move.
No, it hasn't.
So moved.
Second.
Excepting for first reading is what I'm.
Yes. Okay. It's moved and seconded. I, I, my question is, where did the 5% come from? I mean, I guess that's what they do where you came from.
Covers materials?
It came from, it covers materials. The thought behind it is that you're really not paying for extra teachers, extra staff. It really is just materials.